I don't think anybody's gonna be upset with me starting a minute early. 6:59, we're gonna call the regular Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 10th to order, Nikki, please call the roll.
Nikki Austin, present. Jim Curran.
Present.
Mike Davis.
Present.
Mike Prosser.
Present.
Nicole Josephs.
Present.
Teresa Keen.
Present.
Steve Meyer.
Present.
Terry Montgomery.
Present.
Phil Blassford.
And with that, we are in session. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
Second.
Motion by Teresa, second by Terry. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Onto the most beautiful part of our meeting cadence. First Monday of the month. We've got our Student Excellence Awards followed by our Staff Excellence Awards. So, we get to celebrate the brilliance and incredible work of our students and families and staff tonight. Start with Abe Lincoln, come on up.
We would like to have Cam O'Kunder come on up.
Camels. Looking good, Camo. Good work.
You're in center, buddy.
The camera's back there.
Stare right into it. Don't break eye contact.
Alright, Abraham Lincoln is excited to celebrate Camo. Camo's a 5th grader at Abe, and he has become quite the leader this year, not only in Safety Patrol and helping, but also in other areas. He's one of the students that helps lead our morning meeting to all of the students every Monday. And I think what happened this morning to me, I have not even told you yet, is one of the prime examples of why you were chosen as Student of the Month. And so, we're sitting there getting all the morning meeting stuff ready. I'm trying to hide his picture because it's on the slide deck that the students are practicing with. And when I said, "You're gonna see the Student of the Month there, he's in here, you have to keep it quiet." And Cam said, "Okay, I can do that." And he saw Camo's picture and he said, he's like, "Oh, that's an awesome pic, I am so excited for him." So, your friends even recognized that and can see the leader in you and knew that you being chosen was a really good choice. So, I will let Mr. Niemeyer and Mrs. James share why he was chosen.
I've known Camo, I'm made of James, I'm a special ed teacher. I've known Camo a couple of years, I've worked with him, and I've known him since kindergarten. Camo is definitely like one of the kindest, most empathetic, understanding students I think I've ever worked with. He's more than willing to just drop whatever he's doing to help somebody else. I think he's not my biggest fan this year because I pushed him into Race to Read, but he is digging it, he's doing great. I was kinda like, talked to mom, I was like, "Mom, get Camo to join Race to Read, he's so, so good." So, we're so proud of all the progress you've made and how awesome you do every day.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna echo a lot of the same things that have been said. I think my favorite thing about Camo is he just keeps going. Like, if something's hard, he just takes a breath and keeps rolling with it. He'll ask questions when he needs help. He's in reading with me, and I'm kind of like throwing some new strategies and stuff at him, and he's starting to use them, and I think it's starting to unlock his reading a little bit more, and he's feeling a little more confident, that's really cool. But the bigger part for me is that he's just always there, he's always helping. So, I did have, your friends write some stuff about you. I do, I will say, I gotta apologize, I didn't realize the office was gonna put you to work that hard. I asked them to get you out of the room for five minutes to give you a job, and next thing you know, it was like 20 minutes later and you were still stuffing the balls or whatever. And you just looked so bored. And I'm like, I think you'll enjoy it, yeah. So, just such an amazing friend, this is what your friends said about you. Breaks up fights when, well not, hopefully not fights. Disagreements when friends are disagreeing. And I've seen that in person of him just getting to know the guys, can we just, and does a really good job. Something about you always want it to snow and that your friends think you're gonna make it snow. I don't appreciate that. I don't want it to snow, so. Somebody wrote, and this is really interesting, going into middle school, they just said, "I never, don't want to be in Camo's class." Like, that just shows how much somebody really wants to... Somebody wrote, "Mr. Niemeyer was right about all the nice things he said about you." I just included that because somebody told me I was right. So, I was really good with that. Somebody wrote, "I can feel the kindness you have inside you." I would definitely agree with that. Some kids mentioned some of the kiddos with disabilities that are in our class, that you're always the first one to step up and help them. And so, that was named by several kids. And a kid felt so excited about you that he put a whole exclamation, page of exclamation points behind how nice you are. And honestly, that's how I feel. If I could put exclamation points about everything I said for like four pages, I would. So, I'm just really proud of you, man.
Hi, Camo.
Hi.
I'm Steve from the School Board, and I wanna give you a certificate for the spiffiest outfit. I'm really glad to hear you got this award, it sounds like you're a hard worker. I've known your family and you're fault carrying, carrying on their tradition, so I'd like to present this certificate and a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card for you.
So, Northside is actually recognizing two students today. Finley was our September Student of the Month winner, she just wasn't able to make it to last month's meeting. So, Finley, it is way to kick off the year, right? You are Northside's first Student of the Month, which is really an accomplishment. The staff noticed what a leader you are at school, both inside the classroom and outside. You are always trying your best, and you are just a great role model for your classmates and for all the other students at Northside. We are sure proud of you. Let Mrs. Busch share.
Finley. Finley is fun, happy, and an energetic student. She brings joy and kindness wherever she goes, she works hard, you lead by example, and you're always ready to lend a hand. I also asked some of your classmates to describe you, and this is what they said. She said she's fun, they said she's fun, kind, smart, athletic, and always helping others. They call you a great friend, someone they can trust and look up to. Her classmates shared that she shows great teamwork and good sportsmanship, and she is excellent learner. So, congratulations. We love your positivity, your kindness, your leadership, and you really make a difference in our classroom. Good job.
Hi, Finley, I'm Terry with the Board of Education. Nice to meet you. And what wonderful things they had to say about you. All those qualities are qualities that are gonna serve you extremely well throughout your school years and beyond, and no matter what you do, you'll be successful because you have those great qualities. So, congratulations. We have a certificate for you and then a gift card to Barnes &amp; Nobles. Congratulations.
And our, Northside's October Student of the Month is John Gilbert. He is also a 5th grader in Mrs. Busch's class. And what I think, one of the cool things was, is when we were back, gonna make the announcement in Mrs. Busch's class, when I walked in the room, you could hear the kids, "It's John, it's John." Like, they knew. They knew that John was gonna be, be the one that was getting confetti when we... And so, it was just really exciting to hear John. The smile on your face that you have now is what you see in the classroom. You are excited to come to school every day, and you share that positivity in your classroom and around the building, and you are so creative and just a pleasure to have at school. We're lucky, we're lucky to have you at Northside, John. Let Mrs. Busch share.
You are very caring, you're a patient student, you're always willing to lend a hand to others. Whether it's a tricky math problem or including someone who needs a friend, you're always there. I asked some of your Northside specials teachers to comment and give some advice or words of wisdom for you, and here's what they said. John's always, Mr. R. said, "John is always happy and smiling. You're willing to work with everyone and enjoy every second of the day." Mrs. Cleary said, "John just loves to learn. He always has a positive attitude. You always have a smile on your face, you're super creative, and you're always willing to help up here." Ms. Bodell says, "You have enthusiasm. You're ready to learn every day, you work hard, and you love to be challenged." So, we are so excited to be, have you at Northside, in our classroom where you can show that hard work and your kindness and obviously your positivity. So, congratulations.
Hi, John, I'm Phil with the School Board, how are you today? Saw your teachers and principal had some really great things to say. Enthusiastic, love to learn, helpful with your classmates and those kind of things. Hold on to those things, keep doing those things, those are great things and great qualities for you, okay? So, we have for you tonight, a certificate to remember tonight, a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card to get a book that you'd like to read. Congratulations, great job.
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to be here with Clara, and I'm also excited to be here with Mrs. Eckert. So, when they started the board meeting tonight, they always say this is their favorite part of the board meeting. Well, I think one of Mrs. Eckert's favorite days was the day she came into my office and she said, "I'm so excited, someone in my class got picked for Student of the Month." She said, "Third graders don't usually get picked." And she's correct about that, Clara. It is not often that we're standing here celebrating a 3rd grader. So, Mrs. Eckert was really excited that day. One of the best parts of my job and the day that I get really excited is the day that I get to close my office door and make happy phone calls. And so, I got to make a happy phone call to your mom last week, and I just happened to ask her, I said, "Hey, are you at work?" And she's like, "No, I'm actually home." And I said, "Well, is Andy close by?" She's like, "Yeah." And you never know with your dad, right? "Yeah, he's here." And I said, "Well, put him on speakerphone, I wanna tell both of you this news at the same time." And so, I know how much I love Parkside, I know, we know, don't tell everyone else here, that it's the best school in the world, right? But I also know that you have family members sitting over there that agree and know how special Parkside is. So, that's one of my favorite things to do, is call other families that I know love Parkside so much and say, "Hey, I get to spend my days with Clara and she's pretty awesome." So, Mrs. Eckert, why did you nominate her?
I nominated Clara because the, and it's true, 3rd graders don't get it at Parkside. And so, I, when I read the email, I was like, "Wait, what?" I had to read it twice, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited for Clara." When she walked into my classroom this year, there was just something about her that makes her the Student of the Month. The first week of school, we're taking that Ames Web testing, and that always goes fun the first time, because kids don't know what they're doing. I was, had kids all over the place, and I was re-logging in, and as soon as she figured out what had to happen, she got up and started helping me log kids in. And it was half of our class, right? Like, couldn't get in. So, Claire did that right away. She always has a calm presence about her. She helps kids, they want to be her partner all the time, but Claire will notice when someone's needing some help, and she will gravitate towards them and help them. She's a kind heart, she's a great leader, her presence is just calming all the time. She, she's a leader. She's in our Student Leadership Group now, and I can see her going far in Monroe and don't ever change. And, though I'm a Bears fan, this little hat decided we would wear our shirts tonight. But, she'll go far. She's, she's a great kid, you are so lucky.
I just love everything that Mrs. Trammy and your 3rd grade teacher have said, because I know you're pretty awesome, and you really are just gonna do great things as you grow. You're such a great leader, you're kind, caring, and empathetic, and I think you're pretty awesome. So, here is your certificate and gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble. You let me know what you pick, okay? Alright, congratulations, sweetie.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to bring up Kayden Trammy, he's our winner for the Monroe Middle School for this month. I'm really excited to present him tonight with our award along with Ms. Frye, who was a, used to teach him in Social Studies. But now gets to teach him, see him every day to start today in our homeroom. He is a web leader, and that's a new thing for him. And I would say, if you polled our students and staff about Kayden as a 6th grader, they would say he's a quiet, really hardworking kid. This year, I feel like he's worked really, really hard to break out of that shell, and he's not just a leader through his, through his actions, but he's found his voice, and it's been really, really cool to see Kayden as a 6th grader who maybe was hard, had a hard time looking at Mr. Brown in the hallway. Now he can talk and hang out, but not just to me, to his classmates and his peers and the teachers in the building, he is just skyrocketing in his leadership abilities. So, I'm gonna let Ms. Frye talk a little more about that.
So, the 8th grade homeroom team nominated Kayden, and this is what they had to say about him. Kayden exhibits leadership in many capacities. From web to athletics to student council, he continually sets an excellent example for his peers. He is positive and welcoming to everyone, finds ways to include group members, and shows excellent character. We can always count on Kayden to be doing the right thing, even when no one is watching. He works exceptionally hard to strive and do his best work, and shares it with grace. His attitude and mindset, both in and out of the classroom, show his dedication to being his best self. And then, a little something that I wanted to add about Kayden from personal experience. I've known Kayden since 6th grade, and I had the privilege of being his teacher in 7th grade. He has always been a kind, polite, and hardworking student. Now, as an 8th grade web leader, I've seen him grow from a more timid student into a competent, level-headed leader, whose actions have positively influenced his peers, and the 6th grade homeroom, he co-leads. Mr. Brugman and I, we are so proud of you, Kayden. We're really impressed with you.
I'm so excited to give this to you, and I love hearing what everyone has to say about you. I've known you for a long time, definitely your mom and your grandma for a long time. So, you come from a long line of community leaders and people who make our community better, and I love, love, love that you are making school better, that you're making our community better. I love that you lead by example, and Ms. Frye said, like, "You do the right thing and no one's watching." That's, that's awesome, and I just love that, and I love that we get to have you here in Monroe, and that we get to have you be a leader for the next few years and beyond. So, I'm excited to watch you the next few years. And I have your certificate and a gift card, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, Monroe High School's Student of the Month is our junior, Carolyn Martelvia. She was nominated by Ms. Jablowski here. I love it when this happens, because we put out the voting for this, it was a landslide. I mean, the staff votes on who they think should be Student of the Month, and you won by a landslide. I will have to apologize, though, I heard something about confetti poppers or something at another building, so Mr. Brown and I talked, we have to stop.
Good morning.
Yeah, ours was, yeah, mine was not. I apologize. But I will let Ms. Jablowski talk about why she nominated you.
Yeah, so I have Carolyn in art class. She's taken multiple art classes with myself and Mrs. Douglas, and she's been a freshman, and we love having her in the art room. She's so friendly, so respectful, not just to us, but everybody in the room, we love that. She's a really strong student, so like, she shows exactly what the creative process is. So, she is really good at problem solving and reflection, and then creating her own goals based off that reflection. And it's so fun to have a kid who's like really engaged in the creative process, because they make really cool stuff, and it's really cool to see what they do from like Level 1 in ceramics to Level 2 where she is right now. And she's just like what I would call like a low-key leader in my class, where it's like, she's not like an overwhelming presence, but like, she's there, she's a very gentle presence, and everyone just kind of knows they can ask questions to, and she'll help them if they have questions, to the point that like, I was gone one day and she demonstrated a new skill to some of her classmates, and like, they knew what they were doing, and I asked them next day, "Do you need help?" And they're like, "No, we're good." Awesome. Yeah, so I just, I really appreciate her, I'm excited to see what she keeps doing, and I'm just really glad that she got this.
I'll meet you. No worries. Congratulations, Carolyn. Just keep up all of the attributes that they described right here, and you're gonna go a long, long way. So, congratulations. One question I do have, you're a junior, right? How are you gonna like next year?
I don't know.
In the new school?
I like it, I don't know.
Good, we're all hoping that you do. Congratulations to you, best of luck.
Alright, I get to stay up here. Introduce the Staff Excellence Award winner for the second month in a row from Monroe High School, that makes me feel good, but Ms. Melissa Brandt, who are school psychologists. This one is, I think, a little more special to me, because I used to sit in her chair as a school psychologist before coming, becoming an administrator, and watching Melissa go from that first-year person, still trying to figure out what you're supposed to do, right? Especially those first couple of months to now stepping into this role and being someone I can count on every day, being someone who leads, not only just in the Special Education Department, but leads in the school, and is becoming more and more respected, it's really, really cool for me to see. But, I didn't nominate you. It was your special education.
Jeremy had someone totally different in mind.
My person lost. My person lost, no. I can't nominate, that's why I didn't nominate you. The Special Education Team nominated you, and I'm gonna read what they, what they wrote, because they wrote some really good stuff about you. I took out the best. Melissa works tirelessly to meet the needs of all students at MHS. She wears many hats and does so successfully. She's available for staff and students at a moment's notice, she connects with some of our toughest, behaviorally challenged students, and that's true. She holds students accountable while still making them feel heard and accepted. She not only works with students who have special education needs, she also manages the needs of students who have Section 504 accommodation plans. Melissa is a key component of how the Special Education Team functions in the building, as she keeps, helps keep the expectations high for quality IPs. She listens, problem solves, continually asks challenging questions to case managers regarding students to ensure that all decisions are in the student's best interest without sacrificing academic integrity or lowering the academic bar. Melissa continually works with building leadership teams to set staff norms and expectations, providing communication and teamwork. She's an integral part of the behavior and academic leadership teams at MHS, manages statewide testing for, what the, what don't you do? Manages statewide testing for the entire building and also makes sure that all students have the accommodations they need for testing. This year, Melissa is co-teaching a class for our freshman students with special needs to teach them how to do high school. Melissa is a true team player, and Monroe High School is better because she is here. We wish we could clone her. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for all you do. Got a plaque to commemorate tonight, and I just wanna say, you know, from, my wife is a special education teacher, and I know there's a huge pull, all the paperwork, kind of the requirements, and to be able to do all of that work exceptionally well, but then to humanize the students who are most at risk of not feeling like they belong in our schools, or like they're being challenged in our schools, and then on top of that, to lead among your peers, it's just a big deal. So, thanks for all you're doing. You've got the floor as long as you want it.
Before you did that, I'm gonna give you this. It's from the Monroe Morning Optimist. Awesome, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Get out of there. Get out of there. Joe, did you think six years ago we'd be standing here?
After you hired me?
Yeah, I did, actually. That was a funny story, how you got hired, but we can tell that story.
But I just want to say thank you, I truly love working in Monroe. I love the school and the community, and I just love that I get to work with all kids in the building, in the school, and on the tennis courts. I truly couldn't ask for a better team and better mentors through Joe and Jeremy and Josh, so I just appreciate everything, and I love Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We're gonna get all the award winners up in the front for a picture.
Lay them right in front there.
Congratulations, everyone. Thanks, everybody. Alright, you all are all welcome to stay for the duration of our School Board meeting if you so desire. You're also welcome to exit if you want.
See you later. Congrats. Airhawk, good job.
Good job, obvious, thank you.
Yeah, Melissa's story, large part of, why Melissa got here, she got hired right at the onset of the COVID. I think we saw about her, it's her karaoke performance with all of Pratt's students, and that's all, at that point, we knew she was... Melissa, it was a parody version of what song?
Her records.
I have it on video somewhere, but this is not the place to pull that off.
Are you an artist?
Yeah. I know, she told me that.
Interesting, out of here without coming to you. Congratulations. We're so glad we were celebrating you and that you weren't equal.
Here's Teresa.
She's celebrating.
Phil said he doesn't care where Teresa is. Yeah. Keep going. Alright, next up, we got our...
I love it, Phil, I love Phil's energy tonight.
Alright, we got it, our consent agenda. Remember, wish to remove anything from our consent items. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve our consent items as presented.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Mike Prosser. Okay, I'll create these for the record. We got approval of the minutes from October 27th, approval of staff support resignation, Sonya Shoemaker, Educational Assistant, Erin Herring, Educational Assistant, and approval acceptance of community donations, backpacks filled with school supplies to share between the schools donated by Andrea Wilson. With that, any discussion? I wanna say a thank you to Andrea for the donations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Public comment, anybody here for public comment tonight?
We have two students here for Choices of American Democracy to see how this works.
Oh, great, awesome. Would you like to make a public comment? Sorry, Phil. Okay, hearing, or seeing no one here for public comment tonight, we're gonna move on to our Student Liaison Report. We had Oprah singing for us tonight.
Oh, I don't know about that. So, last Friday, MHS had their annual rake and run, and they were raking people's front yards for around two hours at the end of the school day. This past Saturday, Model UN had a virtual meet from 8:00 in the morning until 5:30 PM, and they got to meet with a bunch of other kids in, around the country, like some from Washington DC and New York. The members learned how to speak assertively with, and write resolution papers and be respectful towards their peers, and overall, they had a lot of fun and they got to bond with a lot of different people. This past weekend, the fall play, 39 Steps, was performed, and with this being the last play in the current high school, the members felt that the last performances were pretty bittersweet. Also, on this past Saturday, the swim team competed at sectionals in Verona, and overall, the team did very well and had phenomenal scores, and senior Megan Chapman will be moving forward to compete at state for her 200 free and her 500 free this Saturday on November 15th at Waukesha South. And now that the fall sports are ending, winter sports are starting back up with boys and girls basketball, hockey, and wrestling. This Friday, girls basketball has a home scrimmage against Belleville. Tomorrow will be Veterans Day, and there is going to be an assembly during the PM flex in the high school that will talk a little bit about the day in honor of veterans. And this Thursday, the high school bands will... the high school bands will be having their first concert of the year at 7:00 PM in the pack. Another Model UN meet will happen this Saturday in person at McFarland. And next week will be our last week of the first trimester. And that's all I have.
Much appreciated. Any questions for Leanne? Much appreciated. Okay, nothing for old business, new business. We've got five items here tonight. First item is probably the second most exciting, behind the student awards that we get to do every month. We've got another sponsorship announcement for tonight. Was it 10-year, became a 20-year. I'll turn it over to Mr. Monroe to give us the context.
Yeah, so we're incredibly excited to announce that Rick and Nancy Malacheski and their family have agreed to sponsor the Performing Arts Center at the new high school. We had that listed as a 10-year sponsorship for $250,000, which is exactly what they agreed to do. Ron and I had the opportunity to give Rick and Nancy a tour of the new high school and specifically the Performing Arts Center. And after spending about 45 minutes to an hour with them in the building, came back, grabbed some lunch, looked at my email, and Rick and Nancy indicated, stated very clearly, that they would like to double their commitment and go from a 10-year to a 20-year commitment, taking the total to $500,000 in sponsorship of, of the Performing Arts Center. And so obviously, I can't say enough about our gratitude, appreciation for the Malacheski family. You know, their enthusiasm for this project was fun to watch, I would say. I didn't realize that Rick had a bit of a background in theater design and had a lot of great questions, many of which Ron and I could not answer. But, you know, their enthusiasm, not only for theater, not only for Monroe High School, but for, for kids in this community is so evident. And for those of you that know this family, know it, know it to be true. They're just incredible people and couldn't be more excited to be a part of the project. And so we're excited to make this announcement. We want to say thank you to Rick, Nancy and their family for their support. I do want to say that since this all kind of evolved, at this point, we don't have the signed agreement for the 20-year agreement. We have a signed 10-year agreement. Our recommendation is that the motion be made to approve a 20-year agreement. Approve it. And we're confident that once we get the paperwork revised, we'll, we'll get all that settled in. But happy to answer any questions from the board. And again, thank you to the Malacheski family.
Any questions for administration?
I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to say thank you to Rick and Nancy and the family. You know, I've known all of them for pretty much since we've been in town, so 40-plus years. And while the amount surprises me, the fact of the donation doesn't. You know, they're, they're heavily involved in everything year-round. Right now, was it the baker's dozen?
I was just gonna say that. I pulled it up just to give a plug for Rick because I know he liked that.
They kind of initiated and that has just grown and grown. So it's great. So thank you, really. It's tremendous.
Agreed. Joe, I just, so we're approving the 20-year even though it says 10-year on the board.
Yeah, so we talked about that over here. Yeah, sorry for the confusion. And that's, that's basically due to the timing of when we were contacted by Rick and Nancy. We had everything set up. We got it all nailed in there correctly. And then we got some great news and we thought, let's just roll with that great news. And so, yeah, I think we'll be fine if we just make the motion to accept a 20-year agreement. We'll take care of the rest on our end. Thanks.
Joe, what, what's this put us to for donations that have come in from the community?
Can give you the exact total, but it's, it's over $3 million in donations from our community at this point for the new high school. Thanks for, for mentioning.
Just can't say enough. The generosity of this community is incredible. And, I mean, everybody is talking about it, right? I, I have friends in Madison that, that are on Milwaukee area school boards. They see this. Like, communities don't support their schools as much as this community is supporting their schools right now. So it's, it's, it's awesome and we thank you, everybody who's donating to the school district.
Yeah, to Mike's point, there are news outlets and, and professional organizations that pick up stories across communities and then they put it out in an email to celebrate things that are going on in schools. And I get emails and calls from other superintendents that ask, how are, how are you making that happen? And I have to say, it's no magic that Ron and I have. It's really about this community. And, you know, once the, the opportunity was shared, the community has just taken over and been incredibly supportive. So we're, we're beyond fortunate and, and very appreciative of, of all the support that we're getting. It's great.
Appreciate the, the transition, the announcement from our, our last high school play at the, the current space to the sponsorship for the new one. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the 20-year sponsorship of the new MHS Performing Arts Center as presented. Motion by Terry, second by Mike Davis. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, next up, we've got action item to approve the superintendent goals. Turn it over to Joe to bring some.
Yeah, so this is, the goals have been shared with the board on a couple of different occasions. And I certainly don't want tonight to be in a night, Phil, where I'm gonna sit and read all the goals to the board. But instead, what I will do for the benefit of those, benefit of those people that are at home and may not have heard some of this discussion previously, just kind of list the goal areas. And quickly, the reason we're doing this is that it's important for, for me in my position to have some clear goals in order for me to be held accountable regarding my performance so that the board can make sure that they're, that we're realizing the progress that we hope to see in the district. The way we built these out is a goal statement. There's some deliverables and then there's some specific metrics for success. Again, I won't get into all of those, but if anyone in the community would like to see those, I'd be happy to share a copy with them. The five goal areas that we identified were student achievement. So that, for that one is, and I just realized, some of these still say interim superintendent, so I'll have to get that cleaned up. Superintendent will work with administration and staff to develop and implement a student achievement improvement plan that will improve results in both English language arts and writing. For goal two, we have operational referendum planning and that goal statement is for the interim superintendent to lead, or the superintendent to lead a transparent community. Hard to get rid of that, that label after 10 months. Will lead a transparent and community-informed planning process to prepare a potential operational referendum in April of 2026. The process will communicate the need for community investment that provides adequate resources for student programs and staff retention. Goal three speaks to community engagement and our own ongoing commitment to work with the community stakeholders. This one says the superintendent will deepen trust, transparency and connection with the Monroe community by expanding engagement opportunities, strengthening communication strategies and building strong partnerships with family and local organizations. Goal four speaks to the construction project with the new high school. The superintendent will ensure that the Monroe High School construction and renovation projects are executed on time within budget and aligned with educational priorities while minimizing disruptions to learning and district operations. Happy to say that that's going well. And then goal five is principal support and professional development. The superintendent will provide targeted support and structured feedback to principals, ensuring effective instructional leadership, talent development and progress toward school improvement goals. So those are really the five big areas that I have to focus on. One thing that the board may have seen in their email today is that I provided an email to a document or a link that you can find a dashboard relative to all of these goals. This is something that was suggested by Randy Gutenberg, who you all met several weeks ago. Now, but Randy's a Monroe High School graduate, but also former superintendent at Wanakee School District. And he thought it was always a good idea for, for him and his practice to provide a dashboard which kind of gave people in real time an idea of how we're progressing with the metrics under these goals. And so it's my intention to do the same, which is why I provided that link. So I've got it in my calendar every Monday to check and see if there's any updates that need to be made so that you all can, can see where we're at on some of the things that we're trying to accomplish. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you for providing that tool. I think it's very useful.
Randy gets all the credit for that. I'm just stealing it. I thought, I thought it was a really good idea.
Maybe just one other note, because this has been, I'd say, a bit of a journey over the past kind of 10 months. Because even right when you started this interim, it was important for you to establish goals. It was important for the board to make sure you had goals. And so there's kind of an initial set of goals for the first few months of the interim period, and then we revise these over the summer. And I think sometimes it's, people ask, kind of, is this the, does the school board set the goals? Does the superintendent set the goals? And I feel like it's been a really collaborative process between the board and, and you, Joe, to, kind of, Joe is bringing us, hey, this is what I want to go after. And we as the board are saying, hey, we gotta check this against our vision, our, kind of the bar that we have. And came to, I think, a really healthy agreement without a ton of back and forth, honestly, on, on the set of goals that are, that are here. So just want to say thanks for all the, all the work you put into clarifying this and making them measurable and, and then giving us kind of an accessible way to track in real time how we're doing against them. So I guess I want to make that note on the process and just say thank you.
Appreciate it.
Questions, comments from board members? An entertain a, a motion to approve the 25, 26, sorry, 2025, 2026 superintendent goals as presented. Motion by Terry, second by Steve. Discussion? Oh, sorry. Motion by Nikki, second by Steve. My apologies.
Yeah, you're fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, informational item. Update on the new high school building project.
Yeah, I'll just start out by saying, you know, it seems like we say this all the time, but the amount of work and progress that we're seeing on a weekly basis is incredible. Visually, you can walk in and see just a, a ton of work that's, that's happened. We've talked a lot about some of the concrete work, the M-room floor being poured. Certainly on the exterior, you're seeing windows go in. You're seeing some trim work happening. You're seeing the athletic fields developing at an incredible rate. So we're, we're thrilled with where things are at. And I'll, I'll let Ron get into some of the details that he thinks are most relevant.
Yeah, Joe touched on a couple of the big ones. The M-room, the new M-room floor was poured on October 30th. So that was an exciting period as well as the clear-story windows along the south and west sides of the M-room, the upper ones are completed. So it really starts to finish that space off. All that plastic that was along the M-room, well, that was still kind of a, a dirt floor in there until we got it refinished, gravel floor, has been taken down. So it really opens up that space in that building. I can start to vision what it's gonna be. In 2B, above the offices, they've done the above-ceiling inspections. And so actually, this week, they'll be starting to put in ceiling tile. So that's another exciting moment. And then once they're done with that, they'll move over to the two sections of A, which are the two academic wings, first and second floor heading off to the north. Built-in cabinetry is starting in the offices and the art areas. And I think they're gonna be moving toward science and some other spaces after that. So that's exciting to see. Elevator installations are happening. They're not fully functional, but they're, they're in place now. And so that's great. I think they've done their testing. They just don't start using them. Otherwise, construction will beat them up. So they keep them off, off the radar of people a little bit there. Greenhouse foundation and headroom are in, so that's great and exciting to see what that space is gonna start to look like once they put the walls up. Painting in the gym is going, wallable ceiling walls. And the installation of equipment has started, predominantly the basketball hoops I know were in the other day. So it's exciting to see that. Outside, the concession building is up and the patio concrete is progressing. So we're really starting to see that stadium and patio area really starting to take shape. And baseball softball is where they've really been working outside. When they're not in, you know, we have crews that are in the building, but we have our exterior crews working on that area. And I know softball infield is basically done and they've got some of the dirt on the base, JV baseball infield, but they haven't spread it yet. So those are, they're getting the JV fields done and, and the varsity fields are prepped and getting ready for the turf. Paving for the remaining front lot, the track and the south drive will hopefully happen Friday. We're waiting for the weather to warm up a little bit this week. And kind of on a related note, the city is hoping to pave the streets around North Side there on Friday as well, or Thursday or Friday anyhow. And it seems like I had one note that went over to the next page. Oh, and Bagley Landscaping has done a great job. We got a lot of grass, bushes, trees, fence retaining wall. They, they've finished off the pond areas. And so it's gonna, we're gonna have a good start next spring on, we already have grass and, and, and landscape in a lot of places. And so we should have a good head start next spring in some of those.
Thanks, Joe and Ron. Any questions for administration?
How close are they to turning on the regular heat?
They fired up the HVAC for some sections, but not all. And so they've, you know, before they fired up in a section, they have to flush everything out and get that area ready. And so they've, they've kind of done that for the main academic wing. And then probably in the next two to three weeks, they'll be getting ready to do that for the gym space because obviously they want to get the heat and humidity set and steady in the gym before they bring the wood flooring in. And then they let the wood flooring acclimate to the space for probably about three weeks, I believe it is, three to four weeks. And then they'll actually start laying the floor.
Ron, is there any timetable on the lift station? When would we be able to hook up to that?
We actually had a meeting about that today. They're working with the city and the DNR to get all their permits. And they wanna, they're confident they can start turning it around pretty quickly once they get those. However, it is gonna be delayed. I know they originally hoped it'd be December 15th and it's, obviously with it being November, it's not gonna be that soon. And so we were discussing some of the, the planning as to what we could do as workarounds, you know, and, and it's not a onerous task right now. But obviously, the further you get into the spring, then that becomes more problematic. And so, but they're confident they're gonna be able to get that constructed yet this winter. So.
Appreciate the updates. Let's move on to item 9D. So we've got the second reading of our Act 20 policy. Joe, any context you want to provide?
No, just, as you said, this is the second reading. We've talked about this, about that policy. And then at the last board meeting, first reading, we had a curriculum committee meeting earlier tonight. And for those of you that were, were here, you heard that we have a comprehensive plan in place that goes above and beyond this policy. But state law requires us to get this policy in place. And we recommend that the, the board approve it at this time.
I think we just need to add, I think we need to add a motion.
I don't see it a motion attached to this, but we should make a motion to, to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the Act 10, Act 20 policy as presented. Second.
Motion by Teresa, second by Terry. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. And finally, for new business, we've got our district health plan update. Pass it, pass it on.
Can you pull it up or did you not have it queued up, the presentation?
Do you need this?
Good, or the way you can click for it? It's only five, it's only five or six lines.
Doesn't need to be watching that Packer game down there.
Doesn't need to be watching that Packer game down there.
Probably just go to, there should be a presentation, otherwise.
It's like it's a PDF.
Okay, my bad. So I'll just go to the next slide. As we looked at our health insurances here, know that we were coming out of a, a seven-year rate freeze coming out of COVID, so we had had a really good situation for a long time. And then across the industry, and especially in the education market post-COVID, districts have seen really large health insurance increases. On the case of Monroe, our loss ratio for 2023 was actually 129%, and for 2024, it was 150%. So if you think of it for every dollar premium we were paying, our insurance provider was paying $1.50 in claims. So that's not a, a good thing to be dealing with. Looking at the 126, our 1126 marketing efforts on the next slide. We sent a request for information out to all the fully insured and self-funded vendors in our area. 16 vendors, local and national, all declined to quote us based upon the fact that they didn't feel they could be competitive with what our rates currently are, and also what, with what our loss ratios were. Given that lack of interest for both the reinsurers on the self-insurance side, as well as, which probably, given our loss ratios, wasn't a good time to be looking into the self-insurance, as well as what the other local peoples said, oh, thank you. We were looking to stay with Dean, and Dean's status quo renewal was 19.9%. But we were targeting a district budget increase of 0% over the current year. So we had to look at making some changes in order to accomplish that goal. The next slide will talk about the committee's recommendation. Basically, it was moving from the traditional HMO to focus network, so that's a tighter HMO network within the Dean system. So right now, the Dean network that the school had included, you know, facilities that were outside of the traditional Dean network, such as the Monroe Clinic, or such as Darlington Clinic Hospital, Southwest Health System, and some of those other regional carriers in our area, but who weren't Dean-aligned. And so the focus network brings it in directly into SSM Dean. We looked at a few options, but ultimately, the plan was to continue looking at our status quo design for both the High Deductible Health Plan and the HMO. What we did, though, is we limited the district's contribution to the HSA that goes with the High Deductible Health Plan, and basically made it so that if any individual still wanted to participate or use the HMO, the additional cost was, was on the individual. So last year, we had probably a 50-50 split. 50% of the people had moved, migrated of their own volition over to the High Deductible Health Plan. This year, you know, obviously, there's a much higher cost for people to remain with the traditional HMO. And so we're going to see a higher migration over to the High Deductible HMO plan. The reasons for that recommendation, the premium increase was significantly less than the traditional HMO. The Dean network is the network most utilized by our employees and families. And reducing the HSA contributions brought the employee cost to the lowest possible. So that if, you know, not everybody utilizes health insurance to the same degree, and not everyone accesses the HSA to the same degree, but everybody pays a portion of their premium, and this was a way to make sure that we, we lowered that cost as low as we could. The next slide shows some of the people who would be affected by that shift to the focus network. Again, Lafayette Hospital Clinic, the Memorial Hospital of Lafayette County, Southwest Health, Sauk Prairie Healthcare, people often say, why Sauk Prairie, but a lot of people do go up there for hips and knees, and then Memorial Hospital. So those are the ones that used to be a network, which no longer would be. The next slide goes over our premiums. You can see for the traditional HMO, I'll look at, I'll use the family policies. The employee portion is going to go from 282 to 689 for those who choose to remain in the traditional HMO. Meanwhile, in the High Deductible Health Plan, it's only going to go from 195 to 238.54. The other thing we introduced on the next slide was a family reimbursement account. And so this is for people who choose to go and take coverage with a spouse or other family member. And so what it does is we will reimburse eligible costs, meaning typically they're deductible costs for up to 6,000 per single person, up to 12,000 per family. If they leave, not if they're not on our health plan, but if they're currently in our health plan, can either leave it or go from like a family account down to a, a single account. They have to change it to your level. And so this does a couple of things. Certainly for people who don't utilize the health plan a lot, A, we won't have a lot of reimbursement, and so we'll see significant savings on what we're reimbursing versus what the premium cost is. And for the high utilizers, we may see, we'll still see savings on what the reimbursement is versus the premium cost, but then we're also taking those, those claims off of our, our, our history and off of our report. So it kind of has two ways that that program can work for us. One, Key was one of the first districts that rolled this out, and they had pretty limited success the first year, and then it picked up steam as it went. I'm happy to say that we've had a lot of people asking and inquiring about this. So I think we're going to probably have a little better first-year participation than we even expected. So a quick summary of the changes. It is a narrowed network. The additional cost of, of going up and remaining on that HMO plan is on the employee. So we're likely going to have more employees moving to the High Deductible Health Plan. We're going to reduce the district HSA contribution. We're going to offer the family reimbursement account, and we're going to continue our employee clinic. All ways that were targeted to get to that 0% increase of cost. And I'm trying to open my other document here, because I think I wrote it in there. So a lot of people here, you know, and I think we got down to where it's, it's a net of about 36,000. We didn't quite get to zero. But that's before any of those people move off of our plan, so we're actually going to be probably less than zero. But one perspective people lose when you talk about, okay, we, you know, we were able to not increase our healthcare costs. And so bottom line of the budget, you know, looks the same. The reality is, this is an $887,000 reduction in healthcare for our employees, or that our employees are, are picking up. And so even though it's not a dollar-for-dollar reduction off of the, the school budget, it is a way that we are mitigating and avoiding cost, and avoiding cost increases on our budget.
Does the change in the plan options affect dental or vision?
No, they do not affect dental or vision. We're still on the Delta Network for, for dental and vision is, we cover one screening, but other vision is at their own cost. So the employees have a choice of whether they want to participate in vision for hardware.
I have a general question on the employee clinic that was launched two years ago. Operationally, is it working now?
Yeah, it's actually working really well, and now they're looking at come January 1. They need some more space for some other stuff in the clinic, and we now have ourselves, Monroe Truck, who was in it before we rejoined it, City of Monroe has now joined it, and a number of the surrounding school districts have joined it. So we've kind of outgrown that space, and so they're going to take where the fast care clinic used to be, and they're going to convert that into the employee clinic, and so we will have that. At my last report, I think through September, I don't think we were through October yet at that point, we had claim avoidance of nearly, I want to say, 350,000, and the cost of the clinic to us is 120,000. And so basically, there's a, nearly a quarter million of, of cost avoidance by having the clinic in place, claim avoidance, just through, you know, that's a full year's cost of the clinic, and that was through about nine months of actual clinic usage, so.
Just so, I just want to be clear for the public. I mean, our teachers are going to be shouldering more money in their healthcare plan. And, you know, we're constantly talking about, our teachers are one of the most important assets we have. And, I mean, this is raising at 2415 per paycheck for individuals, and 4356 per paycheck for family, correct?
For those who are, yes, for those who are taking the High Deductible Health Plan.
Right, if they take the High Deductible, if they go the traditional, it's a lot more money. But, you know, our teachers have gotten, you know, raises, but this is really going to cut into what they make.
Correct, yeah.
I just want to be clear to the public that they understand, for us to make our budget, this is what has to be done.
Correct, yeah.
And unfortunately, it is detrimental to our teachers.
I appreciate you sharing that, Terry. To that point, I mean, can you all give us a sense for how, how, how staff responding to this?
I think staff are doing okay. We've done a lot of education. I mean, certainly, it's a big change for some, and it's financially a hit for some. I think, you know, we're, we're still in the mix with what the majority of other districts in Green County are doing. And so it's not like our plan is, you know, out of, out of, you know, the blue or, or different, more taxing than, than, than other plans are on their staff. But it's, it's a change, and it's, it's, it is an impact to their pocketbooks. And so, you know, and I think the, you know, going back in time, I would say, I think sometimes the, the perspective that's lost is, you know, there was, you know, even going back as far as Act 10, when, you know, staff had to pick up half of their retirement system. That was basically an 8% reduction that they, they never saw again. And then we've had the, the revenue limit in place, and so there are a lot of restrictions on compensation side for, for, for staff. And the reality is, with the revenue limits in place, our ability to offer benefits to, to make up for some of those lost wages just doesn't exist anymore, and so we're, we're also pulling back on those as well.
Ron, just, this, this isn't something unique to the Monroe School District right now, going into 2026, correct?
No, this is, this is a conversation pretty much every district is having. Especially when you start looking at, we had reached a little point in there, you know, again, I mentioned, we had a freeze for seven years, but we had reached a point in there where districts were finally getting down to, you know, 2% to 6%, 8% increases in health insurance for a period of about five, six years. And then now, the last two, three years, it's just been crazy. And so not only Monroe, but any district that's seeing a 10, 15, 20, or more percent increase, you have to look at ways to restructure your, your benefit plan, because it's just, no district can afford that, no community can afford that. And that's, that's kind of unfortunate what the norm is out there right now.
Well, the fact that you went out to 16 vendors and nobody would quote on it tells you.
Yeah. What it's also telling is that within the Madison market, Dean is still the most competitive, and we're already there, and we're fortunate that the Monroe Clinic Hospital is now part of it. And so we have all those ties that works well for us. But I mean, if you get to the southeast part of the state, you would say premium is even higher. The northern part of the state, you would typically see premiums higher. It's becoming a little better up north than it will used to be compared to what it was. The Gunderson Network, sometimes over toward La Crosse, can be competitive. But I mean, Madison's historically had the best healthcare market for, for the cost of insurance, but it's accelerating, and it's starting to catch up with the rest of the state. But nobody can still compete with the rates that we're getting.
I just want to quickly say thanks to Ron. I mean, he, on top of everything else that he's doing in the district right now, he navigated a very complex process working with benefit specialists, insurance plan specialists, and, and helped identify this, this plan, communicated it with the insurance committee, and then has taken time to meet with a number of individuals who had questions. And so it's not easy to do, and as you indicated, you know, these are tough decisions that impact people and families. So I just appreciate all the work that Ron did to get us here.
Agreed. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks for the update. Any other questions or comments from board members? Here now, moving on to informational items, administration?
Just two very quick things. Number one, tomorrow is, we're finally at the DPI report card, school and district report card release. We're excited for that to happen. We've got a press release ready to go, some things going out on social media. We'll be celebrating some really good news, so we're excited about that. And then also, Amy did an interview on the radio relative to our Backpack Buddies program. That led to some community contacts that she had, Marge Cleansing put some things out on social media. And overall, that's just taken off, and I think Amy said, we've realized about $7,500 in donations just from that. So again, say it all the time, we said it earlier, but our community is phenomenal and stepped up for kids in need and families in need. So we're super proud of that.
Where are we with that program right now? Because I know we, we were in a tough spot.
About a year ago, we were at a negative balance, and.
We should be good. We should, we're going to be able to take all the kids off the waitlist, and then we should be good for, close to the rest of the school year. That is, it's, it's costing quite a bit per month to purchase everything, so if things don't go up in price, we'll be good. We can make it through the end of the school year, we believe.
With, with all the kids.
With all the kids, so we'll, we'll be sitting at almost 190 kids.
That's awesome.
Being served every week.
I can tell you from talking to other districts, that is not their experience right now. They're, they're struggling to find ways to, to serve kids and families.
That's, I mean, every district in the Green County has, has a backpack room, so that's not actually, it's like, that's not fully accurate. Like, every district outside of Monroe, because Monroe's the biggest, they have a cumulative backpack program.
I'm not saying they don't have programs. I'm saying there's communities across the state, the districts that don't have the funds to fully meet the needs of all the kids.
I agree. I thought you meant locally, and I was like, locally, we have a lot of, we have, we have a great network of programs. I just wanted to clarify, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Thanks, Sheldon.
Anything from my end?
I should start. What exactly is it with it?
Well, no, I was just wondering, about that many kids, but about how much does it cost to fund? Either the whole thing, or a per student for a year?
Yeah, so it's about.
Just a general idea.
So Dana Kunder, I have to give her a ton of credit, and Sharon Kubley, because they're the masterminds and the major organizers behind it. It's costing, and this is, this is without the waitlist kits, it was about $3,300 a month. And it's about $20 then per student is what it's costing a month. The breakdown. Yeah, incredible. Yep, they work really hard to try to get things in bulk. You know, that's, there's a reason why we don't take donations, because that would just, that'd be a bit of a mess. So constantly checking out prices everywhere and making orders. It's great. And Heather, I should give Heather credit too. Heather does a lot of the budgeting. Heather's, Heather Sledge, Sledge Lock. So lots of people making it work.
Board of Education correspondents, I've got nothing. Liaison reports, I may miss. Done, good, okay. Committee reports, okay. Starting in the south, Nicole.
I don't have anything.
Just a reminder, if you want to buy tickets to the EIE fundraiser, you can call Chandra at DAC, or you can go to Monroe Fund and talk to Linda or Christine, and you can get your tickets there. It's $50 a ticket, and that's December 6.
Thanks, Terry.
Nothing from you, Jim.
Phil, Jason.
Curriculum met tonight before the board meeting and had all of the interventionists do a great presentation on, updates on our ELA curriculum and Act 20, and the things that they're doing in the district.
Thanks. Mike up?
Just a huge thank you to all of our veterans tomorrow for Veterans Day, for those in our district and our community who have served. Appreciate their service.
Jim, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the staff who participated in the district insurance committee. I mean, that's, we're usually not talking about sunshine and roses there. It's a lot of data, it's a lot of complex decisions that they're processing through, and then they're also then taking it back and helping communicate that into the building. So thank you to all those people, and, and obviously, Julie on my staff does a lot of the processing of, of applications and, and the paperwork that all goes with the HSAs and HRAs that are all part of this plan. So a lot of other people that are part of this as well, so.
My call, Ron. Appreciate you sharing that, Nikki.
One thing, Jim, I forgot. I'm not sure if anybody was able to attend the play that they had the other night, or last weekend, that 39 steps or 39 stairs. I don't remember which one. It was unbelievable. And what really amazed me were the number of underclassmen that we had that were there and basically had lead roles, you know? So I mean, the future of the new PAC is in great, great hands. It's going to be a lot of fun to watch over the years coming up, so congratulations to them and everybody that was involved. It was outstanding.
Thanks for sharing. Okay. Nothing from me. Agenda items for future discussion. Phil, anything you want to share on this? No? Okay. Five minutes for the press. And with that, we've got 8:12 PM. Seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nikki. Second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, all. Go pack.
Terry, what's the score?
I have my...
Zero?
I can take this. I just need to...